Welcome back, everybody. Thank you all for joining us again this afternoon. I hope everyone had an enjoyable lunch out of the building. I'm going to go ahead and just pick up where we left off. We're going to reconvene the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the next testifiers in opposition?
Okay, the next four if you'd come up would be Janice Howlett, Marina Barrett, Elaine Woods, and John Ingram.
And then, I guess, before we get started, if anyone else joined us that had not already signed in, please be sure to see the clerk's staff in the back of the room or in the front of the room, depending on your perspective, and then we'll get you into the queue. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you want to go ahead and raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name's Janice Howlett. I live at 13200 West Parker Road, Crete, Nebraska, and I am in Lancaster County. I've lived there since 1973. I'm a respiratory therapist and I work for Bryan Health here in Lincoln. I've done so for nearly thirty years.
Oh, can you move over to the mic? Sorry, there you go.
I primarily have worked with pulmonary rehab the whole thirty years. I was just going to make this go faster, so I kind of made handouts I was going to put over here so you can see. I don't know if I'm in the right spot. Maybe it's going to take longer. Sit up, okay. So, I work with these patients, and this is a list of diseases that I see daily with my patients. For them, it's a struggle every day on a daily basis. Their meds, you heard someone talk about the cost. That's a big one, and whether Medicare is going to cover that one or they have to get a different one. They also have to exercise to stay in shape so that they can breathe better. That's a struggle for them. Some of them have to wear oxygen. Sometimes it gets up to twelve, fifteen liters, depending on the type of disease they have. Their ultimate goal is to remain healthy as possible, and that means they avoid smoke, pollen, pollution of any kind. Research shows, yeah, I don't know if you'll be able to get that one on, that within two miles of an industrial chicken barn, this can cause an exacerbation of lung disease. And I'm not going to name all the different gases and pollutants in the air, but that's a list of a few of them. There was an informal health study done for the residents living where out in our area, and as someone earlier said, there's over seventy homes, more than two hundred residents, and they range from newborn to eighty-two. And this is a list of the diseases that are found in the people in our area. To them, when they get sick, it's not just a cough or a cold to easily get over. They may end up in the hospital on a ventilator, lots of meds. They may end up in a nursing home for a while, or maybe, if they're lucky, this will happen. Otherwise, they may die. There was a study done by Borley and colleagues that found that COPD patients living near industrial chicken barns had increased respiratory symptoms. They also found that children that lived around CAFOs had a higher incidence of asthma. They also say that blood pressure can be an issue for people living around a CAFO, and that would be due to the fact that there's stress, anxiety, all of those things that go along with living there. In conclusion, I want to thank all of you for giving us this time to talk, and I know you're all elected officials and you're going to do what's best for all of us. I request that you deny the special permit 18025 until clear regulations and protocols for the industrial poultry operations have been developed. Please take and consider our lives and our natural resources. Thank you very much. I do have two letters that I'm going to give you. Ladies, they wrote them to me, and I just got them yesterday. One lady lives in east of Cortland. She tells you about her experience with the chicken barn there. Another one is from a lady that lived in Waverly and was finally able to be able to move.
Any questions for Ms. Howlett? Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Marina Barrett, and I reside at 12501 West Witstrick, which is five thousand feet or within the proposed industrial chicken facility or a CAFO. I am a registered nurse. Our house is number thirty-three on this map. We have seventy-five acres, and we have cattle on our land. We cut hay to feed farmers' livestock. We are not against agriculture. We have lived on this land, we've owned the land since ninety-five and then lived on it since two thousand. I'm concerned about environmental issues and health issues, which will be discussed today. You have discussed the issue that one of the ones that I was going to pick out, which one of you had talked about, the sixty-mile radius in which they said that Randy was one of the original growers, so I won't talk about that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was that in one of the meetings, that it doesn't really match the videos, and one of it was that the panel had asked Mr. Schulting from the nutrient management that if the focus had been, this is a quote, "If the focus had been on the design of the facility," he stated, "Costco has their own blueprint of what it looks like. Our role is to help growers find a suitable site and look at the zoning requirements." He then, the panel asked him, "In terms of the site assessment, you monitor, you get into zoning requirements of different areas and determine how that plays a role?" He said, "Correct." He also stated, oh no, so then the panel asked him, quote, "So, it would be more inclined to have a favorable opportunity to review in counties that have less regulations, less controls, or do less in the area of ensuring or the review of these types of situations than the issues is the setback was discussed." We're not talking about setbacks. I understand they're bringing that up, but they're in Nebraska because we have weak laws. One thing I did want to bring up, Randy was up here saying what he did as a job. He is a hobby farmer in Gage County. He came to our home or his lot. He is not an established farmer. We've been here first, so he's the person who's going to be the nuisance, not us. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that Costco's operation, if you think about it, is from the eggs, the chicks, the vets they have, the trucks they have, the feed, the gathering of the chickens, the process of the chickens, the packaging of the chickens, the shipment of the chickens, the cooking of the chickens that they cook in the store. That's vertical integration. That's not farming. We are not against agriculture. Everyone in our community all have either cattle farming. One of the things I just wanted to say, and if I'm a little over, I'd appreciate if you just give me a second. And it's just for them to say that we're not, I feel like every time they say this, we're not educated. We are very educated. Like I said, we are all in the ag business. In the meeting minutes, which was not included in the, is it okay if I continue? Which was not included in the testimony in the minutes, but it was on the video, Mr. Walt Schaefer of LPP stated, and I quote, "You don't understand, we are caught up in the numbers, one hundred and ninety thousand chickens. Kind of blows your mind," unquote. Now, this statement was in the minutes. He says, "If you think those chickens only weigh six pounds, it would take a hundred of those chickens to equal really one feedlot animal." So, this was not in the minutes, he says, quote, "So, if we were talking to you about getting a feedlot approval, I bet we wouldn't have the audience here, because beef is known here in Nebraska. We wouldn't really have this controversy. With that said, let's take the one hundred and ninety thousand chickens. That would equal one thousand nine hundred cows. I would guarantee you that everyone on this side would be here standing today because that would not be appropriate for that area because of the surrounding community." Lincoln is growing. There's actually where Randy's house is, there's a guy that had sold eighty acres from agriculture to real estate. People have bought their houses there. Some have bought plots that are not building because they found out about the chicken place. So, in closing, thank you for your time, though. In closing, I just want to respectfully request that you deny this permit at 18025. If you choose not to deny, we suggest you table the permit until appropriate CAFO and siting regulations are in place. But really, my request is that this not be built in this location. There are a lot more other farmlands that can be built. This was not within their sixty-mile radius, as they said. This is too close to Lincoln. Thank you so much.
Any questions for the testifier? Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
My name is Elaine Woods, and I live at 15255 Southwest 114th Street. How does this work? See if that pops up. Anyway, one of my most important jobs in life is being a mom, and along with that comes protecting my children and advocating for their future, specifically my son Noah. This is my oldest of three boys, and I actually spoke about him at the first hearing, and three days after that, I'm going to cry, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. Three days after that, he was actually hospitalized for his heart. He was born with congenital heart defect without a left ventricle. He had three open heart surgeries before he was three years old, doing great, and then passed out, had to be lifelighted to Omaha. In that course of time, and the hospital, the three weeks were there, he had a heart attack. He coded twice. He had a stroke. He was considered for the transplant list. Right now, they're just trying to keep his heart healthy. He's not on the list right now because they want to keep this heart as long as possible, but being on the list is in his future, and keeping him healthy and keeping his immune system strong is in his, you know, that is the most important job I have right now. You guys saw the mortality shed. That's about a mile and a half from our house. The wind in the winter blows to our house from that shed. We've looked at the wind patterns. Can we guarantee that there will be no disease, no flies, no dust, no chemicals that they're using to try to contain this that isn't going to harm my son? I mean, it's really scary for me to think about it. If there's even a small chance, this is his life. And I do believe people have the right to opportunity. I mean, we're Americans. This is like what our country is founded on. But when you're talking about the opportunity of one person against the lives of hundreds, we've talked about how many neighbors are around here, how many lives this affect, so that one person, and they've even admitted, it's going to be like one to two people that have jobs from this. This isn't providing thousands of jobs for our community. This is affecting hundreds. And you know, Mr. Schaefer, he was very clear about what his priorities were. It's about the birds, protecting the birds. Everything's about the birds. Mr. Essink, you know, he wants to stay home, you know? He wants to be closer to his family. I get that. He wants to make more money. I get that. Well, most of us are probably parents. We all get that, you know? But this isn't about birds. This isn't about one person. This is about Noah, my son, his life. This is his life, and this could affect his life along with everybody else. So, I just, I ask you guys to think about my son's life, Noah's life, when you're making this decision, and I ask you to please deny this permit. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Avery?
I'm sorry about your son, but do you have any opinions from your doctors as to what the effect of this facility might have on his health?
I'm sure if I brought it to his doctors, I've had a lot on my mind, and this just happened this last month, so I have not asked about that. But we've had a lot of testimony about the effects on COPD-like lungs. I mean, lungs and heart are together. This is something we have to protect with Noah. He's more susceptible in the winter to any sorts of lung diseases, if you will. So, I will ask that question. We have a cardiology appointment coming up, and...
Well, I don't think we're going to make the decision today.
Okay.
But I'm only one opinion out of five. But I would love to hear from you again.
I will ask. Thank you.
Commissioner Short.
And do you, I'm referring to is the red map. Do you know where, give me the number where you are?
I remember maps confuse me.
I'm just a mile and a half.
So... Oh, yeah. So, we're over here. I believe we're number forty.
Okay.
Is that right? Or did I take somebody else's house?
Okay, thanks. And this is a housekeeping item, a couple things. One, I do intend to close the public hearing today, but any additional information would still be made part of the public record, but there would not be additional testimony.
Okay.
So, just to clarify that.
Okay.
Yeah, there was another point which was brought up a few minutes ago, which is that the minutes of the public hearing will have a general description, but the recording of the actual hearing will be available on the Internet, on YouTube, and that will also be a part of the public record as well. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Ingram. I live at 15380 Bob White Trail in Lakeside Estates. I'm here to represent the Elsinore Lakeside Estates Association as their president. It's a community of twenty-two homes, formed over forty-two years ago in nineteen seventy-six, and I can point that neighborhood out and where my house is. Our neighborhood is around a lake, and my house is number forty-six. So, I live a mile from the Randy Essink property line. For over forty years, our community has lived in harmony with our neighbors who farm, raise livestock, or just enjoy the quiet country life. For you to allow, for you to vote to allow this chicken factory operation to be placed in the center of our community, that would be a tragedy. Many in our community are very concerned about air quality, water quality, increased truck traffic, and the negative impact on our property values. Over the past few months, we've heard testimony from several representatives from Lincoln Premium Poultry about their operation, how it will be different, modern, high-tech. The facts are facts. Thousands of tons of waste will be generated per year. Using the figures provided by Lincoln Poultry, twelve hundred tons of waste will be produced per year. I have a handout that I've provided from Professor Dalvin, who is questioning the math that Lincoln Poultry has produced about how much waste is actually going to be produced. There was also testimony earlier that only fifteen trucks will be hauling waste per year. Just do the math. That's one hundred and sixty thousand pounds per truck if you only use fifteen trucks to haul all the waste. So, that's not even possible. It's probably six, seven times that. Plus, they're only counting maybe one way. Every time a truck comes to haul something out, it has to drive in. So, there's many, many more trucks that are going to come to haul this waste. And while they're hauling it, there are also going to be a debris field that's created that is also very concerning. And Dr. Dobin also put this map together to indicate how widespread the debris from hauling the waste could be. So, in conclusion, we believe that introduction of an industrial chicken operation into a well-established community of farms and acreages would be alien to our community and cause irreparable harm, harm to our quality, our air quality, water quality, property values, and overall quality of life. That is the overarching goal of the comprehensive plan. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. Please vote no to special permit SP 18025, and vote to table future applications of this nature until regulations are developed specific to chicken factory operations. As the applicant has said many times, there are no regulations. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ingram?
The next four would be Bruce Barrett, Mary Ann Teaser, Graham Christensen, and Reverend Helen Greer.
Graham stepped out in the hallway. I don't see him.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. If there's any way we could get more than... Can you introduce yourself, please? My name is Bruce Barrett. I live at 12501 West Witstrick Road. It's number thirty-three on the map. If there's any way we could get more time, this is new information that has not been presented before on the roadway. I do work in pavement design, and it's both professional and scientific in nature, so we'll move forward. I gave you my name. I am a licensed civil engineer, actively working in pavement design. Also, I've got a BS as an agricultural engineer. I will be co-presenting with Mary Ann Teaser. We will each present for five minutes. The slides show here on the left shows Witstrick Road near Saline County line. At the other end is near Randy Essink's entrance with a sign with a sharp turn. You can see a vehicle that missed the turn on the second of September. Number two. "We want the county to know that we respect the people that maintain our roadways, and this presentation is not intended to reflect poorly on the staff who maintain the roads, but rather as an indication of improvements that we would expect." Number three. "This presentation does not provide recommendations for horizontal and vertical alignment." Number four. "Our sources..." Number five. "Special permit 18025. If it's approved, the daily heavy truck traffic will increase." There are three components of this roadway that need improved to accommodate heavy trucks. They are cross-slope width of roadway and roadbed structure. Six. "The desirable cross-slope for gravel roadway is four percent. The maximum cross-slope for new and reconstructed gravel roads is six percent." Seven. "Too little cross-slope or crown results in poor drainage, and too much crown or cross-slope can result in roadway departures and drivers that straddle the center of the roadway." Number eight. "The cross-slope on our roadway measured eight, seven percent. This is an average measurement because the roadway has a parabolic crown, meaning it is flat near the center line and gradually gets steeper at the outside edge." Number seven. "This is a second measurement of seven percent cross-slope." Number nine, excuse me. Number ten. "Based on Ashtoe Guidelines for geometric design of low-volume local roads, the minimum width of the roadway should be twenty foot, but if the roadway provides industrial access, it should be twenty-three, and if it provides agricultural access, it should be twenty-six feet." Number eleven. "This photo is Witstrick Road near the Saline County line. It demonstrates the challenges encountered for agricultural access. The sign on the right states, 'Narrow roadway, half-mile ahead. Trucks use alternate route.' This is important to point out because currently, the road does not have semi-tractor, trailer traffic. It is for this reason that the roadway base has not shown consistent rutting distress." Number twelve. "The Board of Public Roads Classifications and Standards requires a minimum roadway width of twenty foot. It also states, 'Improvements, whether continuous or at selected locations, should satisfy existing and future traffic needs and conditions in a manner conducive to safety, durability, and economy of maintenance.'" Thirteen. "The measured width for our roadway is twenty foot. The traveled way is sixteen-foot width with a parabolic crown. If there is a future heavy truck traffic, the roadway width should be improved to allow head-to-head traffic." Number fourteen. "In order to evaluate the existing roadbed structure and its ability to support traffic, samples were gathered. A roadbed structure is defined as the strata beneath the roadway that provides support to the vehicles using the road..." beneath the roadway that provides support to the vehicles using the roadway. In general, the base is wider than the surface of the roadway." Fifteen. "Samples were taken at two locations. The first near the advisory sign on the east end of the roadway segment, and the second was taken on the west and near the first power pole east of Saline County line." Sixteen. "Since the roadway width is twenty foot, an attempt to find the base was first conducted at an offset of ten foot, and a second attempt was made to find the base at an offset from center line of eight foot. In both cases, no rock-based material was found." Seventeen. "Samples were taken on the gravel surface course. The clay base was measured from zero to three-inch sample was taken, and a sample from three to six inches was taken." Eighteen. "Six samples were tested for gradation, liquid limit, plastic limit, plasticity index, and soil classification."
Mary Ann? Number nineteen.
My name's Mary Ann Teaser. I live at twenty-two four oh one Southwest Hundred and Fourteenth, but my husband and I own the property directly to the south of Randy Essing's property. The Teal Geotechnology Technical Engineering of Omaha provided laboratory test results. There's six sheets of data provided to you as supporting documentation in the back of your handout. Twenty. "The gravel surface course that sits above the roadway base meets Lancaster County and NDOT guideline gradation specification requirements." Twenty-one. "However, the base beneath the roadway is classified by three of four samples as CH or a fat clay. This type of material have, has expansive and shrinkage properties, making it undesirable as a roadway base. When this type of clay becomes saturated or thaws during the springtime, it is very weak and will not support heavy truck traffic." Twenty-two. "Design catalogs are a quick way to get an estimate of the roadbed and gravel layer thickness needed to support truck traffic. However, this method can overestimate the structure needed." Twenty-three. "A more extensive design includes ASHTO ninety-three to design a roadbed for a gravel road." Twenty-four. "Fat clays are weak. When they are wet, are thawing, and are very stiff when dry, as is in the case with hot summer conditions. Both these conditions are taken into consideration using ASHTO ninety-three design method." Twenty-five. "This just shows the inputs were not exaggerated." Twenty-six. "There were three trial thicknesses were evaluated for serviceability and running damage." Twenty-seven. " calculations are in the attached documentation." Twenty-eight. "Assuming a non-draining soil aggregate base, a seven-point-five-inch aggregate base, and a two-inch gravel surface course are necessary for this roadway to support heavy trucks. The existing fat clay base has a liquid limit greater than fifty. It is undesirable to have material with a high liquid limit in the upper twelve inches of a roadway due to its expansive and shrinkage properties. The county would need to evaluate whether soil modification or removal are appropriate rather than simply adding as a void filler to the aggregate base." Twenty-nine. "The cost to make improvements to the roadway to accommodate special permit one eight oh two-five are estimated at one hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred thirty dollars." Thirty. "In concluding, if special permit eighteen oh two-five is approved, there will be additional costs for the county to improve and maintain the roadway. Costs are attributed to improving the base with crushed rock to support heavy trucks, improving the cross-slope from seven percent to four percent, improving the traveled width to twenty-four foot to allow large vehicles to pass with greater ease. With a three-R project, evaluate other necessary improvements to geometrics. In conclusion, I would ask that you deny special permit one eight oh two-five, and in the event that you do not deny, at least you consider updating the rules and regs around this, this type of, of industry."
Any questions for other testifier? Okay, thank you.
Can we get a copy of your handout, say?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Chairman, members of the county board, thanks for, thanks for having me. My name is Graham Christensen. I'm president of G C Resolve. It's an environmental consulting group that's worked on this issue for about three years now, a whole array of issues. I'm also district director for the Nebraska Farmers Union. I represent to the east of here, so we've had a lot of conversations about the barn in the district I represent, and I'm also an active farmer, family, family farmer that is, that eighteen sixty-seven was the year we homesteaded, and we've been in business in agriculture in this state for, that makes it a hundred and fifty-one years now. A couple of things. I want to take a, a bigger look, big picture, kind of how we got here. This form of agriculture, first of all, is outdated. It's a big morphed-up version that's falling out of popularity with consumer demand. After this deal tonight, please read this. There's a lot of groups, including farmers and, and representatives and folks in this community that are working on that future, a better future for our state, to continue to be an agricultural leader. But to get here, here, here is what has happened, or here's what's transpired. We banned corporate, we had a ban on corporate farming, we lifted it. We implemented livestock-friendly. It's weakened local control in many counties, not this one. We've seen meatpackers have more opportunities to own livestock, meaning that more meatpackers are owning livestock and more farmers are going out of business. We implemented the Matrix system after Iowa did. It didn't work there. Their water's contaminated. Now there's lawsuits between utilities, and there's all kinds of issues, including expensive denitrification. And then, most recently, we had conversations on Right to Farm with some of the folks from Lincoln Premium Poultry. We're talking about this dangerous constitutional amendment in a recent legislative session, and if that were to be implemented, that also weakens local control and pulls more environmental liabilities off of these companies. So we are entering into a non-regulated, very dangerous time, and one of the things that's most impacted here from this is the quality of our water. I was first tipped off in two thousand sixteen when I made a call to the regional EPA office. This was just pre-Trump, right before the change happened, and the representative that I spoke to told me that this was the worst location she had ever seen for a, an operation of this magnitude. So we did our research. We looked at the nitrates. You can see over the last forty years, they've doubled. We've looked at the rivers, and we've looked at the wells, and the wells that are tested in red are over twice the legal limit. That's the Elkhorn River, and that's the Platte River, and right where they meet, right below that, that's where the city of Lincoln gets its water. So how much more pressure can we add into that area? The DEQ's own analysis, which is this right here, I'm just going to leave this for you to read later, shows that a lot of the waterways in this area are already category of five impaired, including Conestoga and Yankee Hill. None of these areas can take any more kind of pressure from, from nitrates. And then, of course, some of the most alarming stuff that we heard was Dr. Alan Colock at the University of Nebraska Med Center, who spoke publicly in Omaha and Lincoln, and to the Lincoln City Council, saying that Lincoln was in the most vulnerable position from the litter runoff into the rivers. Now, Lincoln Water validated for the industry that we'd be okay. We'd only have a slight increase in nitrates in their waters, but they didn't incorporate runoff into the Elkhorn Rivers or the tributaries coming into the Platte. So if there's a slight increase without those kind of things being attributed to, maybe we better dig a little deeper. Long story short, I'm going to keep this quick and to the point. There's tons of data all over that we can pull from and continue to do this. We need to use this opportunity to update our standards in the state. When we met with the DEQ, they said, "If you don't like the way things are going, you need to legislate us." That was the, that was the quote from Director Macy that he told us. So this is the start of us addressing this. And when we, we address these standards and we raise these standards, we need to make sure industry and business coming up to our community meets Nebraska standards. Nebraska standards are up here. They always will be. That's who we are. We protect our people first, and we protect our people before we protect folks in the industry. An example of using industry to write these guidelines that would not be helpful is using the nutrient management plan to set the county standards. That was written by the industry. None of us have had any say in this. The public wants to have a say in this. We need to open up this conversation. We need to deny the permit and look at rewriting standards that hopefully can be replicated across the boards, so my home county where our farm is in, Burt County, isn't going to be impacted like potentially the folks in this area could be. This is an opportunity for us to have an intellectual discussion to raise Nebraska's business standards, and we can also use this information to create a bigger and a better discussion to promote the future of agriculture in the way done right, with livestock as part of the solution, and more biodiversity in the ground to create our future. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Just, I know that the clerk's office forgot to start the clock, so you've got more time, so just, I apologize. Anyone else feels like they're being slighted, but yeah. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get, can we get copies of your information?
Okay. Are you going to?
I'll let Mary go first. This is the first one. Thanks. My name is Reverend Penny Greer. Helen is my legal name, and that's how I was signed in. I'm a retired pastor in the United Church of Christ, and in recent years, I've become a scientist. I got a degree in geology in two thousand six, and I'm working on a degree in applied climate at the university. So I'm studying hydrology and really trying to understand the land-atmosphere interaction. If I've been concerned about how this whole operation is going to be going with the Costco chicken plant and the many barns that will be built, one of my questions has been throughout, is there going to be enough water to sustain these operations? So I decided with a number of residents to take a look at our area. This is a map that was given to us by the NRD, which is part of a document that they made for the planning commission, and I assume that all of you have it as well. Dick Erman wrote it, and that map is the first inset on that report. If we look at where the chicken farm is going to be located, there are eleven contiguous wells nearby that site. Two of them are problem wells, the very closest to the site. They're shallow wells at about twenty-five to eighty feet, and they only run about five to ten gallons a minute. One of the wells over here, which is not within the one-mile radius, is an irrigation well. And whenever that farmer has to turn on his well, he literally has to go across the street and ask the homeowner in this location to turn their hot water heater off, because the amount of water decreases so much in that homeowner's well area that it would burn up the element. And that was rather shocking to me. Wow, to be that closely coordinated whenever you have to turn on your pivot. So what's going on? Well, two of us met with two groups of experts. We sat down with some NRD people, whom you've all talked to, I'm sure, and we also met with two experts at the university on groundwater to try to see what is happening in this region. And what we found is that there are basically four geologic units that are probably underneath the earth here. One of them is a very thick clay unit, which is not going to be very successful in transmitting water. What, what a farmer or a producer like Randy would want to do is to get down to the Dakota Formation, particularly the sandstone levels, where there are incised valleys in the rock, which are very productive. The NRD has made this map of their district, and as you see, if you can see it already, this whole area, they claim, is underlain by that productive aquifer. That's not exactly accurate, however. Randy's site would be on the very lip of this productive aquifer. And if you take a look, I'll go quickly. If you take a look at another figure from the Atlas of Groundwater in Lancaster County, I hope you've all, you can all download it. Dana Devine wrote it. There's another figure that she included, and the site for the chicken farm is here. As she mapped out that very productive aquifer, it doesn't look at all like the NRD's site, my site map. Rather, it completely skirts the, the actual location of the well, of the, where the wells would be. So it might not be possible for Randy Essing to get down to that level of productive aquifer. In particular, the nutrient management gentleman mentioned in his testimony that he figured that wells would probably only need to be dug about seventy-five feet. All of the eleven registered wells go down an average of one hundred and ninety-eight feet, and most of them are below two hundred feet to get to good water. Of these, of these wells, we'll put the first figure back up real quickly. I'm sorry, I'm over time. I'll go fast. Of these wells, I think it's only this one that could get down to the Dakota, the sandstone. So it's hard to know where that productive aquifer is. It's a possibility that Randy Essing's operation will not be able to access it, and I would like to firmly suggest, as did those two bodies of experts, that no permit be offered or given until a well test and a pump test is achieved to show that the eighty-gallon-per-minute limit can be met. And indeed, I don't approve that you support the permit and suggest strongly that in the event that you do not deny it, that you table any decision on this matter until appropriate standards for citing CAFOs have been developed for this county. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Reverend Greer? Thank you.
Okay. You have those figures.
And you have the information. You can leave.
Yeah, I gave you the figures.
We have everything that you presented?
Well, I can write out my testimony, but...
No doubt, but any comments?
I gave you all the figures that I used.
Okay, but there was a study you referenced?
Yeah, you, I can give it to you if you'd like it.
That'd be great.
There you go. Yep.
My name is Melissa Baker. I live in Lincoln, Nebraska. I work with Graham Christensen and G C Resolve, but I'm a very, very concerned citizen here in Lincoln. I'm going to put this up. I spoke at the very first planning committee meeting.
Sorry, were you sworn in?
Oh, no. I...
Yeah. I'm going to call the next four.
Oh, sure. I thought I was lying.
Yeah, sorry.
Make sure I pick up my kids on time.
The next four would be Jonathan Leo, Don Gabel, Mary Piper, and Melissa Baker.
There's some, several people that have had to leave for work and other commitments. I was called just now, and I'll be sworn in, so I can testify with the rest of them that are still here.
Is that the only one out of the four?
Jonathan Leo is here.
We have a question. We had attempted to deliberately sign in, in a particular order of speakers.
Correct.
And our list, if we, if we can go to that list as opposed to the one that you have here, where Greg Holman, Edison McDonald, Jane Egan, and Norm Porath.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I went to the bottom one here. You're right.
Okay, thank you very much.
John wants to speak last.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to still stay.
I'm sorry. I called the wrong four here. So you'll be in the next four.
Okay. I just have a time limit to pick up my children, so I just want to make sure I get a chance to speak.
That's fine, so.
We'll do the next, we'll do five then. And you're, you're Melissa Baker? Okay. We'll have Greg Holman, Edison McDonald, Jane Egan, Norm Porath, and Melissa Baker. Okay. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Hello again. Thank you for your time. I know this is going to be a very long day, and you're listening to a lot of people with really passionate testimony, so I very much appreciate your time. My name is Melissa Baker. I live in Lincoln, Nebraska, born and raised here. I work with Graham Christensen at G C Resolve, but just part-time. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I have a two- and four-year-old that my friend is blessing me with watching them so I could be here today. I spoke at the first meeting as well in front of the planning, and I gave them a copy of the Johns Hoskins study, as well as the DEQ that Graham had just previously mentioned. I've also emailed these to you guys along with my testimony and letters, but I can always leave this copy here if you'd like. So, you know, I ask that you freeze any other applications and deny this. I'll start right off with that. The way everybody's closing their testimony is Nebraskans. The way everybody's closing their testimony is Nebraskans, you know, what we need to do for the good life is make sure that our future is sustainable. And as a mother, just like Elaine Woods speaking about her son today, there's many of us that are out there that are very concerned about this issue. This is not just about the four barns and the roughly 190,000 chickens that Mr. Essink is proposing and wants to put in a place that, as you can see, is clearly not a good suitable place according to the neighbors and a lot of the other testimony here today. But really, if you look at the scope of this and what this means, roughly 18 million chickens are going to be our neighbors in eastern Nebraska. Try to just wrap your head around the scope of that, as I've been trying to since my first testimony in mid-July here. That is going to make a huge impact on our natural resources, our water, our soil, and as Graham proposed, what we need to look at is regenerative solutions in Nebraska, not these types of old-model operations that are not going to be sustainable for Nebraska's future, for children like mine and I'm sure yours as well. So what I'm concerned about is the nitrates and other toxins that are creeping into and saturating our drinking water. Nebraska already has impacted waters. We specified that in the DEQ report, which you guys got a copy of. Also, you should know that studies by the National Cancer Institute have found drinking water with just five PPM nitrate levels has an increased risk of cancer, colon, kidney, bladder, ovarian. This also causes reproductive issues. So, you know, what I'd like to say is just a couple of points here that I pulled off some of the government websites, just for some statistics. You know, residents within a half-mile are going to have 83 times the amount of flies. That means disease. And the quarter-mile that Costco is suggesting is absolutely inadequate. Harmful microorganisms are airborne 3,000 meters away from boiler operations. That's nearly two miles. That will hit Elaine Woods' property. That will affect her son and many of the other neighbors. So please note that there are major public health concerns and issues that should be addressed, which is again why I'm asking you guys to deny this application, take a look at the scope of what this is, and let's make sure that as Nebraskans, we have the right kind of laws, regulations, and things in place to make sure that they don't take advantage of Nebraskans and of farmers. I suggest Randy Essink look into regenerative farming. It is the solution for our future. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much for your time today. I very much appreciate it.
My name's Greg Holman. I live at 15064 Southwest 128th. I'm about a half a mile from the site. That's my house right there. While I have this print up, I'm going to tell you, or this picture up, one of my big concerns is, is all the ponds and all the, all the waterfowl that travel on. They're worried about the disease from them, but yeah, we have a pond here. One here, one here, one here, one here, one here, one here. It's going to sound old here. There, there, there. There's a big one here, there's a big one there, one there, one there, one there, one there, there. There's a big lake right here. There's more water areas in this than there is some parts of Minnesota which is known for it. That's just the tip of what I want to talk about. That's just the easy part. They, a lot of this you already, you already know, they, they said that there's going to be a 3% mortality rate. According to the National Chicken Council, that's 4.4. But anyways, you got 3 to 5% is going to be 5,700 to 9,500 birds. In a year, that's going to be 32,200 to 57,000 dead birds. And they're going to put them in a mortality shed that looks like that. You guys all know what that looks like. They've shown it already. There's not a single thing that's enclosed in it. It's going to, they're going to try to keep it dry. I'm not sure how they're going to get the manure there without tracking it over. I'm not sure where they're going to get the manure to cover them, 34,000 to 57,000 birds the first year, when they don't have any manure to cover them. I'm concerned about that. I live pretty close. I have nine, six kids, nine grandkids. My place is set up for them to play. And me, I'm a big kid. Big kid. Anybody that lives in this area knows that when it rains, it doesn't rain straight down. They're on top of the hill, I'm on top of the hill. I've got a picture that'll show that here. That's their, that, from my house, this is the site from my house to there. That's a half-mile. That was taken with my phone, not no fancy camera that's got a big zoom or anything, just my phone. Now, when the rain gets in there and it washes out, that's a concern to everybody's cattle that they got around there. I have cattle, but my biggest concern is the insects. They can fly in, they can fly out, they're going to breed in there. The coyotes, I have numerous animals on my place. It's, most people consider it a, a small zoo, hence the big kid. Them coyotes, there's a, if you live in that area, if you even visit that area, you're going to know that there's just tons of coyotes. You can hear them howling all the time. They come up in my yard. I have llamas, I have donkeys that try to keep the coyotes away. Eventually, when they get to finding out that there's a smorgasbord of food here, they're going to get in there non-stop. They're going to be dragging them out, they're going to be eating them, they're going to be growing, they're going to be breeding because there's more food. I don't need any more coyotes around there. They're going to be going into everybody else's neighbor's yards. Also, along with the insects, they're only a, they're, they're going to breed. They say the, there's a study by the University of Nebraska that says there's going to be an increase of 83% of insects in an area like this, with a facility like this. Within one mile, you have a church. Within three miles, you have a Crete Hospital. Within three and a half miles, you have the Crete High School, intermediate and middle school. In four miles, you have a university. The insects will travel every bit of that far. It's proven. But with the rain in there, it's just going to make it even easier for them. I, they got a riff over there. There's no, like I said, you can see that there's walls, only three or four feet up. The rest of it's wide open. There's not a single thing to keep them out. I don't know where they'd put a door on it when the sides aren't enclosed. This does, I mean, that doesn't make any sense. I'd just like letting the fox jump through the window into the hen house. So, one more quick thing. I know you've seen this too. They say that's going to blow air and get the fresh air in and the old air out. It's also going to be, blow them dust particles out, the smell out. Said, I live close. I have lots of kids, lots of grandkids. I love having them over. I don't want them to not come over because this is blown out. Now, what's going to filter that smell? I have chickens. I know what they smell like, especially in the chicken coop. And then if you're blowing air in there to blow that out and there's no filter, all you're doing is blowing that smell out. Yeah, the chickens aren't going to have to smell it, but I am. I respectfully request that you deny this. I need to keep that place. I don't want to lose it. I don't want my kids to not come around or my grandkids. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Holman? Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Could we get copies of your information?
You want me to wait for him?
Yeah, go ahead and wait.
I can go ahead?
No, we'll just wait.
Okay.
I live at 3921 Eagle Ridge Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. Spoken previously to this body. I hope that you've read and heard my comments. I do want to reiterate that this is really vertically-integrated industrial ag. This is not the traditional family farms that we are familiar with that support our state and our economy and has really made Nebraska the great state that it is. Today, I'm talking about some specific concerns over the treatments. During the planning commission hearings, LPP representatives twice referred to the application of poultry litter treatment as spraying it on the litter. We have some questions about that. It's a topical application, an instruction advised that it not be incorporated by mixing. Poultry litter treatment is a dry granular device known as sodium bisulfate. It acidifies litters, litter and lowers the pH so that ammonia or NH3 is not released as a gas, but instead stays in the form of ammonium or NH4. While chickens are growing, poultry litter treatment ammonia levels low improving the bird's welfare. During the summer months, ammonia levels are reduced inside poultry sheds by increasing ventilation to help remove some of those ammonia fumes. The exhaust ammonia is released outside poultry sheds, causing much of the objectionable odors associated with the poultry facilities. There is a low volume of air ventilated during winter months when birds are growing. Additives are placed during winter months to help reduce the ventilation required and improve the welfare of the chickens. Between flocks, the litter is windrode for composting and temperatures inside the windrow reaching 130 to 140 degrees Fahrenheit, as indicated in the chart, but high temperatures cause the NH4 to change back to NH3, ammonia's volatile state. And much of the ammonia was bound up is now released. Since no chickens are in the facility, their chicken paws are safe, but now the objectionable odor spread further. Tunnel fans are operated during the time, during this time for the safety and welfare of Randy Essink and his employee. Evacuating the fumes at the end of six weeks comes at a cost to local residents that must now contend with a much more concentrated release of the ammonia. With four chicken sheds achieving final grow-out at different times, that means a bi-weekly concentrated release of ammonia is expected. The manufacturer of the poultry litter treatment has a YouTube video describing how to apply it on the litter floor. First, it's heated. This reduces pathogens and insects and then the inlet air vents are open and the tunnel fans are turned on to evacuate, evacuate the ammonia created by heating the floor. The manufacturer goes on to state that this should be, be applied prior to heat treatment because it will be used and won't be available to protect the birds. This is a stunning admission that the manufacturer intends to intentionally heat and remove ammonia through the tunnel fans. This is a significant concern. I respectfully request that you deny special permit 18025 in the event that you do not deny it. I ask that you sincerely reconsider the regulations governing these sorts of entities. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. McDonald?
Good afternoon, Chairman and members. My name is Jane Egan, 7001 West Oshany Road, Denton. I am a 28-year resident in southwest Lancaster County and I also chair the Lancaster Hills Alliance, representing concerned citizen regarding SP 18025. Our organization engaged John Kilpatrick, a Nebraska licensed expert real estate appraiser, with Greenfield Advisors to provide his professional analysis of the issues which would be considered regarding the economic and valuation impacts on properties within a three-mile radius of a chicken-concentrated animal feeding operation known as CAFOs. The impact is both physical and economic, as stated in his letter to the board, which is on file. And I do, I did bring another copy if you need to have it, but it's already on file. In his letter, Mr. Kilpatrick said that it is widely recognized that large CAFOs can have negative impacts on surrounding properties and this proposed facility is certainly larger than the largest category considered by the EPA. From an economic and valuation perspective, properties adjacent to a CAFO can become nearly worthless and properties in the county as a whole will most likely suffer as well, reducing property valuations and thus tax revenues. You have received the entire letter prepared by Mr. Kilpatrick and I hope that you have read it carefully and considered his opinion that CAFOs are a detriment to property values for the reasons stated in his analysis, which include no setbacks, insect and rodent problems, odors, dust, dirt, air contaminants, noise, road damage, traffic, water issues, local wildlife, and plant life alike could suffer significantly with this type of operation located at this site. I re, let's see, I have to drop down here. The Lancaster Hills Alliance has significant concerns regarding the proposed CAFO in Lancaster County. And therefore, I respectfully request the county board deny special permit 18025. If you choose not to deny the permit, I request you table action on the application until proper standards are developed to regulate large industrial animal feeding operations in Lancaster County and not leave it up to the industry or the applicant to make the rules. Thank you. You have any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Avery had asked about the zeolite. Maybe now, since we've talked about the PLT, I could explain that a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. There, it's quickly, it's used primarily in the European Union. There's four or five different types of things, compounds, that are labeled as zeolite. They're not used in this country primarily because of the amount. You need to put about 10% into it, whereas PLT is a topical application of only 100 pounds per 1,000 square feet, so it's much less. The advantage of zeolite is that it neutralizes it long-term rather than just providing a kind of a surface sealing on the top of it like PLT does. So that's, those, those are the differences. And the trucking and hauling costs and availability of zeolite are some of the reasons why we don't see its use prevalently in the, in the US.
Would you address the combustibility issue?
I don't know about zeolite's combustibility. The PLT, the sodium bisulfate is combustible if used in large quantities. The manufacturer says that it should not be placed within windrows. And I, I'm guessing that's the reason. And it's only placed, like I said, at 100 pounds per, or 200 pounds, as I've seen in some research, per 1,000 square feet. So those concentrations aren't reached if it's applied at that application rate.
Likely to be used in this case?
Zeolite is not likely to be used in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I am Normany Porath, a retired Lutheran minister living about four and a half miles away from the site of this project. I'm 82 years old and I've got 14 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. I graduated from Iowa State University with a major in Farm Operation and Management and I'm familiar with production agriculture. I graduated from Concordia Theological Seminary, Springfield, Illinois, and I've served as a Lutheran pastor in North Dakota, Missouri, and I have lived and served in Nebraska for the past 43 years. I have been an adjunct professor in Business Ethics at Concordia University, Seward, Nebraska, and I've taught several courses to their students in their degree completion program at their extension site in Norfolk, Nebraska. When decisions for projects like this one are under consideration, thought needs to be given to the consequences for the environment and the attendant results for our children and our children's children. Considering the negative impact that this operation will have on the environment, the many families living in the immediate area that will be affected, and even the unhealthy conditions for the poor chickens that they have to endure, this project needs to be reconsidered. Beyond these considerations, the county needs to think about the consequences for the taxation infrastructure for the county, adjacent counties, and the state of Nebraska. I respectfully ask that you deny the application for the special use permit number 18025 and that you develop appropriate standards for zoning for concentrated animal feeding operations when, have been reviewed and adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the testifier? Thank you.
I'm going to call up the next five, which is the last people we have signed in. Be Jonathan Leo, Don Gable, Mary Piper, Anthony Rogers Wright, and Jean Hijack.
Mary Piper had to leave.
Okay.
Are you on the list?
Yes, sir.
Oh, come on, I'm stand-up. It'd be sworn in.
If you'd want to raise your right hand, do solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Wilchin, honorable members of the board, thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience. My name is Jonathan Leo. I live at 2321 Devonshire Drive in Lincoln. I have the honor of being the policy coordinator for the Lancaster Hills Alliance. I would suggest to you that this hearing encapsulates a series of public hearings and data submitted to both you and the planning commission that is unique in, for most administrative bodies. What you're getting is, from both sides, I would suggest, a picture of a proposed land use that is inappropriate for almost all considerations that are relevant: public health, environment, safety, general welfare. I think it's particularly revelatory that the applicant itself, in testimony before the planning commission, acknowledged that Lancaster County, and perhaps as well other parts of Nebraska, but certainly Lancaster County, was an ideal location because, in their words, "all regulatory requirements were met and could be met for this facility." What I would suggest that you've been hearing from the Lancaster Hills Alliance and the opposition is that this is damning by faint praise because there is virtually no regulation in Lancaster County at present to properly consider the impacts of this kind of an industrial, confined animal feeding operation in Lancaster County. Two of the planning commissioners who voted in favor of this permit last month did so expressing reservations about the standards that they were faced with to consider this kind of an application, particularly Commissioner Harris, who introduced a motion that was passed unanimously at the planning commission to request your body to consider a text amendment to change and update and modernize the playing field for this kind of a facility so that from this point forward, all of these facilities would be evaluated by the appropriate modern standards: public health, safety, environmental, et cetera. We believe that this is a fundamentally unfair process that both you and we are saddled with. The fact of the matter is that the applicant has not yet submitted its Form B to the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, which is the document that details every single aspect of the operations proposed for this facility. That has not been made public yet because this process of the zoning approval or denial comes first. As a result, all that's in the public record are promises and representations from Lincoln Premium Poultry about what it will do, what it can do, what it expects to do, but nothing that can be pinpointed. And let me just quickly explain what hasn't happened yet that will happen after you, in sequence, after you have made your decision here. A Form B will be submitted by Lincoln Premium Poultry. It will go to NDEQ, which will immediately make copies of it for the Natural Resource District and for your board to review and comment on. Within NDEQ, the details of the litter management plan, the details of the chicken mortality management plan, the details of how the litter will be applied to land, if at all, and where, the details of best management practices to control odors will be specified. Until that happens, none of us can know what exactly is going to be proposed for this place by LPP, and therefore, this hearing and the studies that have purportedly been done by the Health Department, by NDEQ, if there have been any by NRD to this point in time, I would argue, are speculative. Until such time as LPP has this application in place, this is the cart before the horse. The application should come first so that the public and the planning commission and your board can know exactly what it is that LPP is planning on doing, can know, instead of having to speculate, what the litter treatment, the poultry litter treatment consists of, whether there might not be better kinds of litter treatment. This is just one example of all the information that we do not know about, cannot know about, and you're being forced or being put in a position where you're being asked to make a decision in favor of this permit with inadequate information. This is why the text amendment is so important. And for those reasons, just in part, I would urge you to deny this application, to put a moratorium on the receipt of any applications for additional large CAFO permits in Lancaster County until such time as you have, with the resources available to you, developed, passed, and implemented a series of new measures, including a zoning ordinance, including a matrix for environmental, public health, and safety evaluation across the board that can be reviewed and evaluated before a zoning decision has to be made. Because once the zoning decision is made, theoretically, an applicant can begin to move and start constructing, expending resources in reliance upon the approvals of a permit, and then it's a kind of a legal Rubicon that gets crossed at that point. If you don't feel it's appropriate to deny the permit outright at this point, I even more strongly urge you to table the motion, pardon me, to table the permit application altogether until such time as you've had a chance to review the regulations and improve them. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Any questions from Mr. Leo? Who's next on the list, Mr. Nolte? Move over, run the microphone.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Thanks for listening to us. I think everybody appreciates your efforts, anyway. I wanted to address the idea of contracts, grower contracts specifically. The, basically, this contract was not written for the benefit of the grower. This was written for the benefit of the processor. Because the long and short of this whole thing is there's really no upside on the grower contract, and there's a lot of room for downside. The thing about that is, the contract can be terminated at any time by the processor with no recourse on the grower's part. He's just out. And there's a lot of other examples in there about that, including restrictions of legal access. So, but one thing about this stands out to me is that, basically, the guy's got to pony up $2 million to build some chicken barns that he's going to work in and raise somebody else's chickens on his land. So, and on top of that, what Costco contributes to this is the chicken feed and the chickens, and that's it. What the grower contributes is the land, labor, and the capital. Those are long-term things, especially the capital constriction. Usually, this is about a fifteen-year, you know, loan on his part, not... They don't have that much money to put into it to start with. Most of them don't. So, they have to get a loan. Well, loan's guaranteed by the federal government, but the thing is, the guarantee is to the lender. It's not to the grower. So what that means is, if there is a bankruptcy filing by the grower, which has happened before, this is possible for sure, if there's a bankruptcy filing, the bank is going to be made whole to about eighty percent. The twenty percent will be left over from the grower, hopefully. So on $2 million, that'll amount to about $400,000 if I have to drag out the grower out of his land and whatever else he can scrape up. But he's broke. He's done. The banks are happy because they're paid. The contractors are happy because they've been paid because they built the place, and everybody else has gotten money out of this deal up to this point. The only ones that gets, the only time the grower gets any money out is if he grows some chickens. And he is really controlled by, well, basically Costco. They call the shots on everything, even from write-ups on minor infractions to heavier things, and there's penalties and so forth. And like I say, there's no upside to this. The most he can get out of this is, he can grow so many chickens and get paid for those for so much a pound, and that's what he gets. So, if you grow, you know, but that's pretty much maxed out on the facility, so that's all he can do. So if he's going to think he's going to have some family time and everything else, it ain't going to happen too much. He's going to be busy raising chickens. Walt Schaefer was here, and he said he grows chickens in Virginia. Well, Walt's here. I wonder who's taking care of his chickens, you know? And, and, well, obviously Walt has somebody take care of his chickens. That being the case, they're going to have to be paid. They ain't going to do it for nothing. So Walt's spending a year or two here, you know, strawbossing this operation. My question is, if Walt's making any money off chickens back home? And if he is, my next question is, do you have the standard grower contract that we have here with these guys? Because these guys here aren't going to be able to take off and hire somebody to grow their chickens and then have some money left over. That's not, that's not going to happen. I mean, what I would like is, I would like the county board to basically derive, basically, a suitability assessment on the project. Not on the contract so much, because you can't probably get into the ins and outs of the contract as you can on the project, which would cover the county's obligations, and it'd be assigning risk instances on any of that, so the county doesn't get steamrolled on something, so the grower doesn't end up the same way. Basically, a suitability assessment's used in a lot of professional things. It keeps everybody out of trouble. It keeps the buyer and the seller, for instance, of some things, out of trouble because it brings to light some things that is best discovered sooner rather than later. And that's really what I would like, is a project suitability assessment, and it's done by a third party, independent third party. You don't have the bankers on one side and Costco on the other side, you know, contributing. It's somebody devoid from those, so there's not that bias. And basically, that's the long and short of what I hope the county board does, is formulate and require a suitability assessment on this. And it's, I think it's better for everybody. Do you have any questions? I don't know if you want more on this from my point of view. I'll be glad to give it to you. Just get ahold of me.
Any other, any questions? Okay. Thank you. Who's next?
Next is Anthony Rogers Wright.
How's everyone doing? My name's Anthony Rogers Wright. I actually live in Seattle, Washington, but for the last two years, I've been spending a good portion of my time here in Nebraska as the deputy director of Regenerate Nebraska, which I co-founded with my good friend Graham Christensen, who is a fifth-generation farmer and a community advocate. The people on the coast refer to Nebraska as a flyover state, and they couldn't be more wrong about that. It's been an honor and a privilege for me to travel this amazing state the last few years. I even got some cowboy boots out of it and learn about the people, the farmers, and the people on the ground, from urban centers like Lincoln and Omaha to farmers and ranchers in Lancaster, Oakland, and even out in the Sandhills. And it's been really a distinct honor to work and get to know the indigenous tribes of this state, including the Winnebago, Ponca, and the Omaha tribes. All the people that I've met here represent what I believe to be the best of Nebraska. They're hardworking, values-oriented, and care deeply for their communities and neighbors. I'm here today to speak about these proposed Costco broiler farms, and I'm sad to say that I'm embarrassed, as a Seattleite, that a corporation that is headquartered in my home city has commenced a set of nefarious operations in your community, because that's not how we do business in Seattle. The people of Seattle, we care deeply about our environment. We care deeply about our economy. We care deeply about our farmers, who produce our food and take care of the land for future Washingtonians to enjoy. So there's really only one way to characterize what Costco seeks to do to your community, and that's extractive colonization. And that's why, that's not how we do business in Seattle, and that's why they chose your community, because they know damn well that they would never be able to get this passed in Washington State. The people would rise up, much like many of the people here are rising up against this proposal right now. No one knows the impacts of extractive colonization in this state and in this country better than indigenous people to these lands. So we have to ask ourselves, how many discussions did Costco have with native people in Nebraska? And how many people on this committee have had these conversations with the Ponca, the Winnebago, and the Omaha? If you haven't been having these conversations, I would beseech you to, because these marginalized and vulnerable communities are the ones with the information, or the ones who are going to be hit first and worst. And I know that you guys all want to be fully informed before you make a decision, so I would really beseech you to do that. Senator Deb Fischer recently introduced the Fair Accounting and Reporting Method, or FARM Act. The acronym itself is really insulting and an assault on the farming communities of Nebraska. The bill has now become the law of the land, and it allows for factory barns to be exempted from reporting their air emissions pursuant to the toxic release inventory, which was promulgated as part of the Emergency Planning and Community Right-to-Know Act of 1986. According to the EPA, EPRA was created to help communities plan for chemical emergencies, and it also requires industries to report on the storage, use, and release of hazardous substances to federal, state, and local governments. That's not the case anymore, so we're putting these communities even more at risk. These facilities are short of relief's heavy levels of ammonia, hydrogen sulfide, poultry dust, they have bacteria, toxins that cause respiratory illnesses, and all kinds of other health impacts. I'll finish up. During my fifteen years as a professional consultant, I've written hundreds of environmental analyses pursuant to national, state, regional, and local environmental policy with a focus on air quality impacts, water quality, and socioeconomic impacts. And it's clear to me, having reviewed some of these analyses, that there are more holes in them than when, there's more holes in these analyses than Iowa's offensive line when they play the cornhuskers. That's been like what I've seen. So what I would close in saying to you is that I think a line has been drawn in the sand, and I hope that you choose right now to stand with Nebraska and stand with the great people of this state, and not a corporation that's putting profits over people. And I would implore you to consider your options carefully, because the people are more hungry for safety and justice than they are for factory farm chickens. Thank you.
Any questions for the testifier? Thank you.
And the last person was Gene Hayek.
I'm Gene Hayek. I live at 13751 West Roca Road, Crete. That is on Highway 33, which is just approximately a mile and a half south of this...
One second. Your time hasn't started. Now it has. There you go.
Anyways, I'm about a mile and a half south of this property. I'm number 22 right here. Okay, I would just want to reiterate on what Greg Holman said about the ponds, because Costco or Lincoln Poultry, one of them people stated that if we had any ponds or a lot of waterfowl in that area, we wouldn't even consider this. Well, let me tell you, we have a lot of waterfowl. I have, between me and my neighbor Bob Bruntz and Linda, right in this area, maybe you can't see it, right in this area here, there's a nine-acre NRD pond, which is approximately a mile and a half south from this proposed property, and I have hundreds of Canada geese there every day. And in the spring of the year, there are, at times, 10,000 geese on that nine-acre pond. This is in the spring, and everybody knows that epidemics and flus come from mainly the snows and blue geese. And so, as you can see, this is almost directly south of that. So with the prevailing winds in the spring, where's that air going to go? It's going to go right toward that property. So if we have a breakout with any kind of aviation flu or anything, it's going to go right toward that building. So what they said was, they wouldn't even consider if there was that much wildlife, birds in that area. We have hundreds and thousands at times. So I would, again, hope that you people would deny this, and maybe, like the Lincoln Planning Committee voted nine to nothing to make a study, do this before you make a decision on this proposal. I thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. No, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition that had not already signed in? Okay. With that, it's two o'clock. I think that might be a good time for a very brief break, maybe fifteen minutes. And we'll be, me back here, right now it's two o'clock. Right now it's two o'clock. We'll meet back at 2:15, and then we will continue with testimony in the neutral capacity. So we're going to stay in recess for fifteen minutes. Thank you.